Okay, thank you very much. I see 5:30 on the dot. So this is my plan. I'm going to ask Jason Carter to come up and make his initial presentation. Hopefully, he can get through that in 10 or 15 minutes, 10 maybe. But my goal will be to leave the public hearing open until 6 o'clock. And we'll close the public hearing at 6:00. We will reopen the public hearing at the next council meeting. And then we'll vote on that legislation at that point in time. So if you don't get all your questions answered, stay after 6:00. We'll start the city council meeting. And Jason and anybody with electric company will step outside with you and help you answer your questions for tonight. So with that, I don't think we need to call Roe for a public hearing, do we?
No, sir.
No, okay. Counselor?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everyone taking time out of their busy lives to be here. This is an important topic when we're talking about restructuring rates. And we need to spend some time and discussion on it. I keep getting questions from people like, "So how much are my rates going up?" And I'm giving them answers like, "I don't know, maybe it depends." And those are just not good answers, right? It doesn't give people a lot of comfort. And the only way they're going to have comfort, and you're going to have comfort in voting on this, is if we have a good discussion about it. So I'm here, Mark Bochamp is here with us. He's with Utility Financial Solutions. He did the math behind our calculations. So he can explain those kind of things for you. I'm here more to talk about our staff and our policy and the things that we want moving forward. And hope to have a good discussion. I will ask this of you because I feel like I need to be able to get through the material so we can answer questions. If you'll hold your questions and let me get through the slide deck, then we'll answer them at the end. I think that'd be the best process. You all have those executive summaries in front of you. The presentation kind of follows the executive summary. So if something catches your eye and you've got a question about something, if you can just make a note right there, then it'll give you a point to come back to. So with that, let me get started here. Our rate restructuring objectives. So, you know, there are two things that go into rates, and it's policy and its costs. The policy side of it is, we think that we need a rate structure that fairly apportions costs among all of our customers. Customer A shouldn't have to pay for customer B or vice versa. We want to encourage conservation. Conservation's a good thing, and it saves society a lot of money. We want sustainable revenue for our organization. So we know that we've got a rate structure that's going to keep us being the reliable utility that we need to be. And two, we want to avoid debt. That's something that we've been able to accomplish. Mayor Smith, under your regime here, you know, we've not borrowed money with the electric department. We've actually paid down debt significantly. At a staff level, everyone likes that business approach. And we want to stay the course about avoiding debt. Here's a little background for you. Really, the takeaway from this slide is the work that we've done on rates since 2006, since we had a major increase in 2006. That was really the last time that we took a holistic look at our rate structures. We've had small adjustments since then. But in the time period between 2006 and today, there's probably been more change in the electric industry than there had been for the previous 100 years. It's the MISO markets. We acquired Plum Point. It's advanced metering. It's the shale revolution. It's LED light. It's solar power. There's so much upheaval in the industry right now that it warrants looking at our rate structures and to make sure that they're set properly to gather our costs. So in order to examine our rate structures, we thought it was important to get someone who's an expert. Like I said, Mark Bochamp's here. He's president of Utilities Financial Solutions. Works closely with municipalities all around the country. And I know I've been to some of his training. So I think Karen Scott has been. I think Matt Bryson's here. He's been with their training with Mark as well. He conducts that for APPA. And Mark did a lot of work diligently looking at our costs and our rate structures. He's found that our system costs are not properly charged to small general service or residential hot water rates. Basically, those two rates are being subsidized. And I know that's not something that's going to be popular for them to hear, but it's just the truth. The numbers don't lie. Our monthly customer charge does not cover our fixed operating costs. What I mean by our fixed operating cost are those costs that we're going to have to recoup for wires and transformers and switches and meters and computer systems and all of those things that are related, that we've got to be able to generate that income to drive those kind of systems. Mark can talk more about what goes into it. But our current fixed monthly service charge is inadequate to recoup those costs. The other point that we learned was that we really need some additional revenue, not a lot. It's a small adjustment. But to maintain our recommended minimum cash balances on hand that keeps us agile, that we can respond to problems when they arise, and we can maintain our capital improvement plan without incurring debt. So based on that input, we've got five requests. The electric department comes to you with five requests. One is that we increase our fixed customer charge. That's the first. The second is to eliminate declining block rates. We think that that's not the environmental position that we should have in the city to incentivize people to use more electricity. We want to properly charge our costs across rate classes, avoid subsidies one to another. We need to increase revenue, as I discussed, and we'll discuss in more detail. And then also, just as an administrative matter, we want to replace our ECR with a new power cost adjustment rate component that's easier to calculate and has less volatility built into it. We propose that those rate changes would be phased in over a three-year period. So I want to kind of run through these in detail and talk a little bit more about what each one of them means. When we say increase the fixed customer charge, everyone on their bill has a monthly customer charge that shows up that's independent of how much power they use. And we believe that right now, we're recovering many of our fixed costs through our energy sales, which is problematic because our energy sales have been declining. And it's not bad that our energy sales are declining, that people are using energy efficiency, and some people are investing in solar power. We just need to have a rate structure that follows along with it. So it's aligning our interests with our customers' interests. So we recommend increasing the fixed customer charges so customers can benefit from energy efficiency, solar generation and such. And that won't jeopardize our operations. And that's our first request. If you want to see how the customer charges would flow through, this gives you an accurate representation of phasing in from one year to the next. Currently, the customer charge is $7.73 for a residential customer. It would go to $1,095 in the first year, $1,418 in the second, and $1,740 in the third year. Those charges, as they increase, are offset, to a degree, by how much electricity you use because the energy charge would be decreased. Monthly charge, fixed charge increased, energy charge is decreased. The second thing that we're requesting is to eliminate declining block rates. Currently, we have a declining block rate structure. This means that the more kilowatt-hours that a customer uses, the less they pay per kilowatt-hour. Declining block rates are often viewed as encouraging consumption. And contrary to sound environmental policy, some utilities, and I believe even Entergy, has an inclining block rate. The more you use, the more you pay. We thought that would be too much of a shift to make in this window of time that we're talking about, this rate structure being shifted right now, that we just wanted to shift from a declining block rate to a flat rate. So our recommendation and our request is to restructure rates to eliminate discounts based on increased electric consumption. So the third request is to properly charge costs across customer classes. We believe that each customer should pay their share of operational costs. One customer shouldn't subsidize another. Our cost of service study identified two rate classes that were being subsidized, one being the residential hot water rate and the other being the small general service rate. Our recommendation, based on that, is that we would eliminate the residential hot water rate. So over a three-year period, everyone who's on a residential hot water rate would migrate to the regular old residential rate. And then that the small general service rate would be incrementally increased over three years. Our fourth request is an increase in revenue. So when we talk about having an increase in the monthly service charge and removing declining block rates and eliminating subsidies by increasing some rate classes, that's going to result in increased revenue to the department. We think that that's important. That's something that, that's revenue that's needed by the organization to continue providing reliable service. I've got a few notes on here that I'd like to talk about, especially, you know, inflation has diminished the value of rates that were set originally in 2006. If you want to have a dollar of buying power in 2006 terms, you've got to have a dollar and a quarter. I mean, that's just inflation. That's the way it works. We have planned capital improvements over the next five years. In particular, you know, we have reworking our McCain substation. Those large transformers are a million dollars apiece. The switchgear goes around, it costs more. And those are expensive. And we want to be able to pay for those out of cash flow. We don't want to borrow money to do it. We are trying to be more mindful about depreciation of our facilities at their replacement cost. We've got a lot of facilities that are 50 years old. And it's not going to cost the price from 50 years ago to replace those facilities. It's going to cost the price of today. So we need to accumulate the revenue that's necessary to cause that work to be done. And then, as always, we want to maintain funds necessary to deal with unplanned expenditures. Whether it's weather or some other emergency, we want to be able to manage those in stride. The thing we're recommending and what we are requesting is that the revenue increases that we're going to realize from the adjustments that are made to rates should be preserved for the department's use. I think that's annotated in your electric summary. To give you an idea about how we see those increases playing out in each class, now, this is in general. But you can see residential customers as a class about how we think that the revenue will increase for the department. Small general service being the largest increase. Well, except, I'd say, with phasing out residential hot water, I think our total number of customers is around 400 hot water customers. It's a problematic class when people get on that rate. We don't even know how to verify that they're still hot water, you know, electric hot water customers. So it's just problematic in general. They will experience a rate increase by migrating to the regular residential rate. And our large customers are closer to their actual costs. So the revenue increases that we're anticipating are pretty nominal. A closer narrative as to what is the effect on residential customers, and this will give you just the dollar per month bill, you know, on a monthly bill that someone would expect to pay. You know, our average customer, which I think is bolded, or, and let me say it this way, the industry average customer, because we often have customers that are lower than the industry average. But the industry average for consumption is 1,000 kilowatt-hours. So you can see, in year one, their bill would go down about $1.02, and then in year two, it would go down another .93. In year three, it would go up about $1.78 a month, and they're back to about where they started. Now, at lower consumption levels, you'll see they're not reaping as much savings from lower energy prices and the increase in the monthly service charge. They're seeing an increase of, you know, $1.49 a month in the first year, you know, at the 500-kilowatt level. And then another $1.15 increase in year two, and $2.50 in year three. If you translate that to the 1,700-kilowatt-hour customer, you see that's a higher energy consumer. When we, if we eliminate the declining block rate, as is suggested, they would realize a larger increase on their bill in raw dollars. Normally, those are higher bills anyway, so the percentage is less significant. The last request that we have is more of a housekeeping request, and it's to replace the ECR with a power cost adjustment. Our current energy cost recovery method normalizes energy costs over a six-month period. But it requires us to forecast energy costs and energy consumption three months before it happens. And we think that those estimations call, for lack of a better term, induce error into the model. That we're, we'd have a more predictable calculation if we can just use the numbers that we have experienced in power costs and assign them forward. It would be more predictable. It would be easier to calculate, and it would be less volatile. So, you know, that was kind of outside the scope of our cost of service study, but certainly appreciate Mark and the help that he gave to us in developing a PCA and moving away from the ECR. So this is my summary slide, which my clock is showing I'm right on 15 minutes. So, but it's basically just restating what I said earlier. The policy on the left side that we think is important is that we fairly apportion costs among customers so that one customer is not subsidizing another. We encourage conservation. We have a sustainable revenue source for the department, and we avoid debt. And then also, that, what that leads us to, the recommendation that it leads us to is that we increase our fixed customer charges. We eliminate declining block rates. That we charge proper costs across our rate classes. Increase revenue slightly. And replace the ECR with the PCA. So that concludes my presentation. Thanks. I know that some of you are probably sitting there, you know, chewing on a question right now that you had eight slides ago.[1014.02][1014.02](Laughter)
Mr. Whitaker, we'll let you go first.
Okay. Mr. Carter, could you go back to your first slide having to do with the customer service charge?
This one?
The table. That.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I am assuming that what we're looking for is stability in our fixed costs.
Yes.
With that. And then in conjunction with that, there'll be a change in the metered power. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, Ron, you're sitting down there. In the power industry, I know there has been a tendency in some areas to go toward demand charges. Do we have that capability at this time?
We have the capability to move to a residential demand charge. We haven't explored that because it would be such a shift for our customers. But with the metering systems that we have, we could absolutely change and go to a demand charge for residential customers. We have that flexibility. If that's something that the council thought was an appropriate direction for us to take, I mean, then obviously, we would take that direction.
Okay.
Ms. Ross?
All right, let me think for a minute. Go ahead, go ahead and move on.
Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
When do we expect these rates to go in place? Take place?
The legislation that's been submitted would show that year one would start October 1st, and then of this year. And year two would start October 1st of the following year, 2019. And year three would start October 1st of the year after that.
Thank you.
Mr. Height?
Okay, I got two or three of them. The first one has to do with the increased monthly customer charge.
We're going to go, you're going to increase the fixed monthly charge, correct?
Correct.
That shows up there. Are you still going to charge the variable energy consumption charge? Is that going to remain?
The ECR variable is going away.
Going away?
That's all being pulled into the, just...
Fixed monthly charge?
Yes. Now, there would be an adjustment that floats, but I don't know.
So does that mean our bill will be easier to read?
I think, I think that it will.
Okay. Second question. Has to do with number two, eliminate the declining block rates. Currently, the way I understand it is the more you use, the less you pay. Is that right?
Correct.
So now, we're going to go to the more you use, the more you pay. Is that right?
Well, we're not saying the more you use, the more you pay. We're just saying it's a flat rate.
It's a flat rate?
There are no discounts.
Okay. So it's a flat rate whether you use 500 kilowatt-hours or 1,700 kilowatt-hours? You'd pay the same?
Yes.
All the way through? Okay. All right. And then the third one has to do with residential hot water. I've heard all my life that if you've got an electric hot water tank, you're paying a lot. Does it cost more to run an electric hot water tank than it does a window unit, a two-ton window unit in the summertime?
That's apples and oranges. We need to stay with that.
How can you determine that somebody has an electric hot water heater?
Well, and that's part of the problem. So some time ago, whenever North La Rock adopted basically Entergy's rates, and Entergy had a hot water rate. I think that they established a hot water rate because ArcLa established a natural gas rate when they were trying to push natural gas-powered air conditioners. So it was, it was an industry issue that came up. We mirrored, when we mirrored Entergy's rates, that rate class came in. Honestly, it's challenging because when somebody signs up for an electric hot water rate, and we, and so we validate that. Well, that's the cost of someone going there to validate it. And then how do you know that they've got it two years later? You don't, right? So they're paying a discounted rate.
Pardon me?
There's only 400 out of 37,000, so that's not going to figure.
The electric water heater rate, I mean, you know, I mean, it was out there, you know, basically 400 kilowatt-hours because if you didn't have a reduced rate, it was too much money to, it's cheaper, so much cheaper for gas. So that's why we made it that 400, first 400 kilowatt-hours cheaper, so.
But that was, what, 40 years ago? It was a long time ago, yeah.
Well, yeah, 30, within 37 years.
Thank you.
Question. So, yeah, you're being kind on the, to keep that electric water heater rate so long. The other question I have is, what does that, what's the price per kilowatt-hour that we're moving to, like the first year? What is it? What is the number? You got the number? .00 something, 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 something? Yeah, I'm just curious. I'm just, that's fine, okay. And then, and then I think we're being very kind as far as the three-year step as well, too. I mean, that's very, that's very generous. And I didn't know that we were in the declining rate.
Most of those have been phased out.
Yeah, I mean, that, to me, that, I haven't seen that in forever.
And you can see, this is one of the reasons why we felt like it was very important to visit our rate structure, to look at the structure holistically and to say, are we reflective? Do our rates reflect the message and the policy that we want as a community? Because that's arguably a declining block rate sends the message of, we don't care how much power you use, use more, we'll give you a discount, right? And I don't know if that's the message we want to send.
Ms. Ross?
Okay, just looking here on the residential rates, it's .09990 from June to September. And then October to May, .0999, October to May. That's for the first 1,000 kilowatts and then over. So we still have a block there, basically? Because it decreases .073, October to May, anything? I guess I'm kind of confused on this.
So are you looking at our current rate schedule? If it's...
Well, these are the ones that become effective October the 1st, 2018. I'm looking at the residential, general purpose residential service effective October 1, 2018.
All right, so, okay, right, so because the ordinance is intended to phase us to the place to where these are all levelized. Am I correct in saying that?
Oh, so, okay, so it's just gradual.
So they're not immediately going to...
So the block won't immediately go away?
Go flat out over three years.
Okay. All right, I could have gone on to the next one, but...
Okay, sorry.
Ms. White, did you have a question?
Yeah, it was, I talked to you on the weekend and asked you this because someone asked me if the levelized billing opportunity that you offer is going to be affected in any way.
It shouldn't be affected at all. And if you'll think about it, especially for average customers who are out there, it probably won't affect anything about the way that their levelized billing works because the end sum of the bill doesn't change a whole lot.
Are we cutting on and cutting off now? Are we using AMR?
Yes, we're doing remote connect and disconnect, absolutely.
Has our write-offs helped? Has our write-offs reduced?
I don't know. That's probably a Karen question. I don't know.
I'm just curious.
About whether, whether remote connect disconnect has helped in write-offs.
I would say what's helped more is the new rules and regulations that were put in place.
Okay.
Once we get, we start prepayment, then that'll really help.
Yeah, that'd be great. He has to be a number.
Ms. Ross?
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
Now, you said on the ECR? Oh, what did you mean? Okay.
Go ahead, Mark. Answer Ron's question.
I know this is in some way, but because of the increase in the customer charge, the average energy rate is currently about 9.9 cents. It's going to decline to about 9.7. So there's a slight decrease in the, in the energy charge. And that's because of the increase in the customer charge.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Ross?
Okay, one more time. The ECR is going to go away on our bill, correct? The little ECR? Or will it?
I mean, they're...
But it's going to, it's going to be PCA. They'll just have a different name. It'll still be on there.
Yes.
Okay. Got you.
Ms. Robinson?
I know you said that the new rates would start October 1st, 2018. The mayor just mentioned something, the prepaid rate. When can we expect that to start? Or will we do that this year?
If I was king of the world, I'd want that to start two years ago. I'm just a firm believer in prepaid. And I know we're working hard on it. And Karen's looking at me over her glasses like she's got an answer.
I'm not the expert in, of course, the electric department personnel here. But we did an RFP for that. We, the responses were due last Monday. We're evaluating. We had one responder who has done a demo to us. So we've got to get with them and work out the contract. And then they have to coordinate with our current billing software in order to put those things in place. So it would be our goal, I think, to have that in 90 days. But that might be a little optimistic, so.
Before October 1st, I bet.
We're certainly hoping for that.
Yeah. Ms. Ross?
Okay, one more. On this ECR and the PCA, how do we, I mean, we have no idea what that's going to be then, do we? I mean, as far as what the difference? And I know it fluctuates all the time.
Right. And right now, there's a fixed component that's within the ECR. It's just, it's a complicated mathematical problem to come up with what the ECR is. And it's, that requires us to estimate future values. I think we've done the best that we can to reduce the amount of variation in that. We should see, you know, smaller variables and numbers that we can produce faster and be more confident in.
But we have no idea how that's going to change then?
I think because it's all driven by, a lot of it is the market. You know, it's just, it's driven by the market, so it's...
That's kind of the unknown, not knowing what that, that's the big unknown. The other, I understand, I just...
I think our ECR for the last 12 months has almost been flat. I mean, we, sometimes it's a minus figure, sometimes it's a positive figure, if y'all remember.
I know we asked Taylor to put a, you know, chart in Excel on what the ECR is, and it looks like a flat line. It just doesn't, you know, vary that much.
Yeah, Mr. Baxter?
But the, if I understand this correctly, the PCA, once it quote changes, it would be more based on historical data versus a crystal ball that we kind of use now?
Yes.
For the ECR?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson?
Don't actually have, it's a magic eight ball. No, I'm kidding. No, I mean, we have people who are smart folks who are estimating and trying to make educated, and I don't want to call them just guesses, but, you know, using past data to estimate where consumption's going to be, where our power costs are going to be. But you never know. I mean, it's driven by the weather. The weather drives power costs more than anything else and, which is inherently unpredictable.
One of the things you mentioned was transformers, and the large one you mentioned up on McCain to replace would be about a million dollars. And so the transformers that are, let's say down in Ward 2, are those transformers, and my notes also says something is 50 years old, are we talking about transformers that old?
We, and, you know, we could let some of our, you know, more knowledgeable people with the department maybe answer directly to the age of our infrastructure, but, but yes, we have transformers that are that old.
Well, I just...
Getting a nod from behind me that we have transformers that are 50 years old.
Well, when we start replacing them, please start in Ward 2 so my lights can stay on.
We want your lights to stay on.
I, I want them on, too.
Pay your bill, too, I guess.
All right, let's, let's quickly go, and is there anybody in the audience that'd like to ask a question right now? Seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing again at the next meeting, and all the, the questions will be from the audience first, okay? Tonight, we had council members first. Next meeting will be audience first, and then we'll filter back in to, to the council. So I must set aside 30 minutes unless y'all think we need more than that. I'm, I'm prepared, I think 30 minutes, we're going to be fine. So if anybody out there wants to talk to, to Mr. Carter or anybody on our electric company staff, they're here now, you can step outside and do that. Media, if y'all want to talk to any of these guys, right out there in the hall's a great place. So thank you very much. I'm going to adjourn this public hearing to be reconvened. I didn't introduce him when he was here, but Ken Keppel with Sherwood City Council was here. They have been briefed. Every member of the city council, I think, but one in Sherwood, we briefed them, and Mayor Hillman, she was briefed, Mayor Young was briefed. So they are aware of, of our proposed changes, and I was glad that he was here, and I apologize for not introducing him first, so. As soon as Mr. Witcher gets back, we'll start our general meeting.
Your daughter, Caitlin Field-Covero.
Ross?
Here.
White?
Here.
Taylor? Robinson?
Here.
Baxter?
Here.
Harris?
Here.
Height?
Here.
And Witcher?
Present.
Form is present.
Thank you very much. I invite you to rise for a prayer and pledge to be presented by Alderman Witcher.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for this day that you've given us in our lives. Thank you for the love that you show to us, for the patience that you show to us, and for those who are around us that, that are in need. We, we hope that you look after them and bless them. For our men and women in armed services, we pray for them, for their guidance, for their protection, for their families who stand and waiting day after day, we pray for them. As we do our business tonight, please watch over us and help us to make good decisions. And we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So move.
Second. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Okay, anybody want to pull any communications?
Was it number one?
One is about cable and number two's ECR. No?
Just number one.
Number one, pull number one. Now let's...
Would you like it read by title or by its entirety? Nathan Hamilton, North Little Rock Director of Communications regarding advertised notice public hearing regarding cable television franchise renewal, April 9, 2018 at 6 o'clock
Okay, how about a motion to approve, accept?
A move.
Second.
On the motion to accept?
Ross?
Question, go ahead.
There's no change in their original agreement, right?
Well, we're in negotiations right now.
Oh, there isn't?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be some changes, yeah.
Okay.
Ross?
The public hearing, I mean, are we going to have someone, they'll be here to speak on this, on the changes, upcoming changes?
No, probably not, and Nathan's not here.
Mayor?
Are they here?
On this, under the Federal Communications Act, the first step in the process before negotiating a new franchise agreement is to have a public hearing to give the public any chance to bring any comments that they have about the cable provider to the attention of the city council, and this has been advertised for a public hearing tonight. It's the first step in the process so that the council is aware of any concerns before the negotiations begin.
Okay, all right, let's accept the communication, then I'll call a public hearing.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to call a public hearing. Is anyone here with Comcast Cable on their mind and this franchise renewal agreement?
And, and Mayor, also, we have a representative that is present today also from Comcast, if there are any questions.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I just have a question concerning their signal. Is that acceptable?
This is a public comment.
Okay. If you're watch, when you're watching the digital signals, the voice is not synced with what they're saying, it's off, and it gets very aggravating if you notice what you're watching for.
Are you saying that the, the sound goes up and down, it fits commercial...
No, no, sound stays the same.
No.
But your lips, it's not synced with the words they're saying.
Yeah, okay. But, all right, we'll...
Let me ask you that. Let me have a question. Is he referring just at Comcast or is it with all of them?
It's all the digital.
It's all of them, because I've noticed it on...
All the digital signals, Comcast, future, and I don't know if they can do anything about it, to be honest with you.
I've no, I've noticed that at home myself, so, I can hear faster than they speak, so.
Okay.
Can you hear?
Thank you, any other?
I can hear, I'm here.
Any other comments from the public? Ms. Ross, Ms. White?
This was a communication that was added after the original packet went out, so not everyone saw that. So I think as far as having a public hearing tonight, I don't know if that many people actually knew that there was a public hearing tonight.
Mayor?
Go.
This went out on two occasions. It was published in the newspapers, two newspapers twice, so it was made known to the public that this would be a hearing, there would be a hearing today at this meeting, so.
But in defense, a lot of people don't read the newspaper anymore necessarily, but, you know, the little, not that they don't read the newspaper, they don't read the little fine ads and everything like, like they do when the agendas, they, most people go to the city website to pull up the agenda, so.
And I believe that Nathan also put it on the city website. If I, if my understanding from him is correct, that he put it on the city website and he also published it twice.
Okay, I didn't see that, so I was just curious.
And, and please don't hold me to that, but I, I thought that's what Nathan told me he did, but you may not...
I'll certainly take comments from here to wherever. You know, if somebody's got any comments on, on this, they can certainly address it to me or email me or whatever else, so when we will have those when I get into negotiations with Comcast.
One other thing that you can negotiate on, can you get us a contact number? We had one at one time, we had somebody at Comcast that was super helpful with us, and now we don't have that Comcast contact anymore. And we, we're the ones that get the complaints on Comcast.
I agree. I agree, absolutely.
I just had a question, and Alderman Height just, or Councilmember Height just mentioned something about the sound and the lips not together. Is this in any TV show or is this just something?
Now, let Mr. Height answer his. I've noticed it more on the live broadcast. I have DirecTV now, have the satellite, okay? I used to have cable, I used to have U-verse, and I've noticed that on, with the satellite, especially on live broadcasts, like, you know, if you're watching Good Morning Arkansas or whatever, or the news, that the words coming out of their mouth are not at the same speed that their lips are moving, you know, and I, you know, it's...
Now, I watched four hours of golf yesterday, and I didn't notice it at all, but, anyway, we'll, we'll address that, we'll talk to them about it.
It's on all of them that have, you know...
Y'all will be involved in negotiations. Once we get into negotiations and try to figure out what we're trying to tweak, we'll keep you all abreast of everything that's going on.
Mayor, just, I will say that if you have an antenna, you don't have that issue.
Pardon me?
I don't, I have an antenna and I don't have that issue.
The, does our Comcast rep have any comments that you'd like to, to make? You're certainly welcome.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Evangeline Parker. She's the guest manager for external affairs for Comcast, Big South Region, Memphis. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Evangeline Parker, guest, and I'm the external affairs manager for Comcast, and I do want you all to know that we do have people here locally who are ready and willing to serve and to help. Tonight, I have our new technical operations manager with me, Brian Dolansky, and Brian will stand. And we also have a new Xfinity Store manager, Shalanda Bunch, who is also here, and they are always willing to answer any questions that you might have. And as representatives inside the mayor's office know, if you contact the mayor's office, they call me, because evidently there was an issue where you couldn't get through to customer service, or you just didn't like the response you received through customer service. So they have my cell phone number 24/7. You can call.
We need your number.
Yes, you can call me and I will...
Brian, is Brian here locally?
Yes, Brian and Shalanda are both here locally.
Okay, what is, what is Brian's job?
Brian is the technical operations manager.
So if something breaks or a pole falls down, he's your guy?
He's your guy.
And if, if we have a problem with service at the Xfinity Store?
If you have a problem with, with your, your, your box or with your phone or whatever product you have a, a problem with, then you can go right into the Xfinity Store and Shalanda and her representatives will be more than happy to help you. See, they're smiling.
Yeah, I was waited on the other day there, and the gentleman was very knowledgeable and very professional.
Yes, and I received a call about a week ago, Mayor, concerning an issue in your office, and we had someone out within a few hours to take care of that issue, and that's why we're here. You know, we want you to enjoy the products and services that we provide. We don't want to make it hard for you at all.
And we appreciate it.
And I do also want to let you know that we're excited to be in North Little Rock, especially on Saturday, April 21st, that is Comcast Care's Day, that's our National Employee Service Day. We will be in service at Recycle Bike for Kids, we'll be recycling bikes, and we encourage you all to join us in that effort. So if you have any questions after the meeting, I'll be here and be happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to close that public hearing, and let's go ahead, we need to do number two.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Would you like it read? Karen Scott, Finance Director, Chair Energy Risk Management Committee regarding ECR Adjustment Factor for April 2018, point zero zero six five positive.
About a motion?
Move to accept and file.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'm going to make a, a quick proclamation here and presentation. Leonard Montgomery is our chief of our 911 and Emergency Operations Center. This week is Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and we do this every year. One reason that we want to do this is, is that we want to identify our 911 operators and everybody that works in that center down there, because the safety of our police officers and our firefighters are dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from the citizens through the telephone and to our, our officers. So the public safety dispatchers, as y'all very well know, we, over the years, all the 911 dispatcher are having a hard time recruiting. Since Leonard's come on board, we have, we are running at full staff, correct, Leonard? All right, we're down one, and which is unbelievable, and so it shows what, what a great job that Leonard has done and all those guys down there, all your supervisors and everything else. So therefore, as Mayor of City of North Little Rock, I proclaim the week of April the 4th through the 14th as Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in honor of the men and women whose dedication, diligence, and professionalism keep our community and citizens safe. So Leonard, I'm going to walk down and present this to you. All right, thank you very much, and all your dispatchers, gentlemen, we push them Okay, let's get rolling. Is, I don't see Don Chambers. Is Edward Wallace with the Planning Commission here? Yeah, Ed, good, glad to see you here. Sylvester's not here. Anybody want to pull a consent agenda? I want to pull 65 and 67. Anybody else? All right, how about a motion to approve all but 65 and 67?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Let's go to number 65.
A resolution appointing John Hay to the City of North Little Rock Parks and Recreation Commission.
Move for adoption.
Second.
I would certainly want to recognize Mr. Hay, and, and there's no doubt that probably you have spent more time in Burns Park than anybody else in the City of North Little Rock.
Even, even the parks director.
Yeah, even the parks director, no doubt. Johnny's grandson's played baseball out there, Johnny and I played baseball out there when we were little, so, anyway, Johnny, thank you for your service, and I know, Mr. Hartwick, you got a big job keeping him in line, but you can do it. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R 1867, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution reappointing Edward Wallace to the North Little Rock Planning Commission.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace, again, thank you for your past service, your future service. Stand up and let everybody see you. Johnny just walked out, I was going to get everybody to stand up. Ed, thank you so much for all your service. Appreciate you very much. All right, new business.
R 1876, Mayor Smith?
All right, new business.
R-1876, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Verizon Arena for the purchase of a scoreboard appropriating funds.
Move for adoption.
And a second?
Second.
Basically what we're doing here, the, the old scoreboard will not qualify us for any big events, especially big basketball tournaments and things like that that bring in a tremendous amount of money. We were able to find this particular scoreboard out of the Atlanta Arena, and so we got it for $500,000, which is probably a third of the price of a new one. And the arena's gonna pay $200,000, the City of Little Rock, the, the county, and the City of North Little Rock, we've agreed to split the other $300,000 at $25,000 a year for the next four years. I've talked to Convention and Visitors Bureau, they're gonna help me with that. So, I need to get this approved from you guys so we can tell them that we're gonna take it. So, questions?
Can you explain that one more time about why we didn't qualify for, to have the certain regionals?
Because the, the scoreboard doesn't meet their minimum requirements. The scoreboard's the new one we put in there 15 years ago, so it's pretty old, and they won't come with a score, a scoreboard like what we have.
About how many do we, you know, attended for the regionals? I know it's, it's, it's spread out over several days.
The last one we had was packed, and our downtowns were packed, and our hotels were packed, and so it's, it's, plus the advertising you get off of it, you know, it's what, you know, it's showing all over the country, and everybody knows that this regional's in North Little Rock, Arkansas, that's worth jillions. Plus, they're also gonna give us about $25,000 worth of in-arena advertising each year.
Okay.
So, we're kinda paying for the, paying for the scoreboard and getting free advertising.
If we can just remind them that it's located in North Little Rock.
Yeah.
They always wanna put Little Rock.
Yeah, I get it. Okay, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1878, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to utilize Federal Aid Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, funds for the Bishop Lindsay Streetscape Project from Locust Street to Byon Street.
So move.
Is that a second?
Second.
Question, Ms. Ross?
Okay, there's a 20% match, I guess I was trying to find what exactly the amount of the match is, or is that one, the other one, that there's one tied on to this? The dollar amount on the match?
No, Karen.
Am I missing that?
We've already appropriated some of that.
The first one, so like a willingness, and the second one, is the engineering portion.
Stay here for the next one then, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We, we've appropriated already some money in, in 2017 for these projects, and like $167,000 from last year's budget.
I think the next legislation is adding to that though, correct?
Right.
Okay, so I'll ask you that question on the next one.
I think it's an additional hundred, you know, we decided, something like that, when we met the other day, but, yeah, we'll bring it back. This is just telling the Highway Department that, that we're ready to go forward with it. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1879, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Marler Engineering Company Incorporated to provide engineering design and construction observation services for the Bishop Lindsay Streetscape Project.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1879, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
A resolution expressing the willingness of the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, to utilize Federal Aid Transportation Alternatives Program, TAP, funds for the Bishop Lindsay Streetscape Project from Locust Street to Byon Street.
So move.
Is that a second?
Second.
Question, Ms. Ross?
Okay, there's a 20% match, I guess I was trying to find what exactly the amount of the match is, or is that one, the other one, that there's one tied on to this? The dollar amount on the match?
No, Karen.
Am I missing that?
We've already appropriated some of that.
The first one, so like a willingness, and the second one, is the engineering portion.
Stay here for the next one then, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
We, we've appropriated already some money in, in 2017 for these projects, and like $167,000 from last year's budget.
I think the next legislation is adding to that though, correct?
Right.
Okay, so I'll ask you that question on the next one.
I think it's an additional hundred, you know, we decided, something like that, when we met the other day, but, yeah, we'll bring it back. This is just telling the Highway Department that, that we're ready to go forward with it. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1879, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Marler Engineering Company Incorporated to provide engineering design and construction observation services for the Bishop Lindsay Streetscape Project.
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
No, this is the one I had the question. Okay, had we not already appropriated funds? Now they're adding a portion to this project, is that?
Yes.
What they are, so what's the additional cost to that project? The $106,000 is the additional cost of what we've already appropriated?
No, again, the $106,000 is, for this one, is for engineering.
Right.
Okay, we, I think it was around 75, and then we're adding.
So the additional portion is the increase?
Engineering is like.
Around $31,000 then?
Something like that.
Okay, I wish we'd had that dollar amount of difference, so, that's, I didn't understand. So, so this one includes an additional $31,000 from what we had previously approved?
That's a, that's an approximation.
And Chris, this is Ward Two's money, correct?
Yeah, this money's coming out of.
This money's coming from Ward Two.
Oh, okay.
Not for the engineering services.
Here's your spreadsheet.
So, Mayor, if I may.
Now, the sales tax capital improvement.
In the 18 budget, there is $117,700 appropriated in the sales tax capital improvement fund. This amount for the engineering is, according to this legislation, to come from that amount that is already appropriated.
Okay.
There are no construction funds appropriated at this time.
So we haven't, okay, so we haven't appropriated anything, that's what I'm.
That's, that's why there wasn't a dollar figure in there, 'cause we already had it in the budget.
Okay, all right. And this is from the sales tax capital improvement, correct? Got you.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
No.
R-1880, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 902 North F Street in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on 902 North F Street? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
R-1881, Mayor Smith?
Please call it.
A resolution certifying the amount of a cleanup lien to be filed with the Pulaski County Tax Collector against certain real property located at 701 and a half West 35th Street in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Call a public hearing on 701 and a half West 35th Street, anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1824, Councilmember Robinson?
Please call it.
An ordinance approving a request to waive certain requirements of the master street plan for access criteria for property located at 12209 Highway 70 in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Suspend all readings.
Second.
Is that a motion to suspend all readings?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
How about a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Council, public hearing?
Now, I thought that we had taken that off of there when the list was originally drafted, and it had been put on for a public hearing on there, and, and I'd asked for it to be taken off, and I think that there, that that didn't happen in our office, and so my apologies for that, but we don't need a public.
Same thing on the next one?
We do need a public hearing on the next one.
Do we, right?
Because it's not been before the Planning Commission.
Okay, all right, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
O-1825, Councilmember Height?
Please call it, and then, are we gonna hold it, or make, or have it read for the first time, and then hold it, or what do you suggest?
You could have it read once and then held. Do you want me to tell them what, what the plan is? Councilmember Height, for the next meeting, has asked for an additional ordinance to amend the sign overlay district.
That's your suggestion?
I think it was actually at Mr. Spencer's, but, but I concurred with that, so, so since we have this set for a public hearing, in case anyone wants to speak on it, we can have the public hearing this time, and then next time we'll also have Mr. Height's.
It's gonna be additional legislation in two weeks, so.
Okay, so, let's just, you wanna call it?
Call it, have it read once and then hold it.
Call it.
An ordinance granting a waiver of sections 14.19 and 14.23 of the zoning ordinance to allow an electronic changeable copy sign on certain real property located at 606701 John F. Kennedy Boulevard in the City of North Little Rock, Arkansas, first reading.
Move this, suspend the rules and place it on the second reading.
But you're gonna hold it?
Or just, or.
Yeah, let's hold it.
Let's just hold it then.
All right, we'll hold it, and I'm gonna call a public hearing right now, okay? Is anybody here to speak on the changeable sign in front of First United Methodist Church? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have a comment.
All right.
This bit of legislation and this issue is a good example of why I like being an Alderman in North Little Rock. And I'll explain what I mean by that. Mayor, I remember a phone call that you made to me late one Friday afternoon back in the summer of 2000, and during that conversation, you, you told me that, that Charlie, that, that nobody knows more people in Ward Four than Charlie and Becky Height, that's come, that's true. And that fall, I ran for office for the first time, and I was a member of First United Methodist Church. First United Methodist Church is where my wife and I were married, it's where both of our kids were baptized, and it's where I had a lot of friends. And the preacher, every Sunday during his message, would get up and put in a, a kind word about voting for Charlie Height, and a lot of the people at First Methodist stood at the polls for me, and they got me elected. And I'd go to breakfast with about a dozen of them every Thursday morning down at Brother Paul's. And during the years, I had become friends with a lot of people out there, and, and when they came to me and asked me about this sign out there on John F. Kennedy Boulevard, there was no way in the world that I could say no. No way in the world. So I hope that when we do vote on this in a couple of weeks, that everybody will feel the same way I do about First Methodist and their, and their request for an electronic changeable copy sign on John F. Kennedy Boulevard. And let me add that Alderwoman Ross, or Councilwoman Ross, you're right, we did open up a can of worms when we approved the, the sign at the Macclet Conception, but the fact is, we did approve their sign, and so First Methodist has come to us now, and as part of that can of worms, we're gonna consider their sign request in two weeks. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, yes ma'am.
So, I believe what the next legislation for the next meeting, if I'm understanding this, would be that we're going to expand the area that it's possible to have a sign, is that what, what we're, what we're to expect?
Yes, that's what you can expect.
It's that one block on the west side of John F. Kennedy Boulevard that.
Right down to, I think to O-Sage.
O-Sage and Aztec, and is that Aztec?
I think so.
Okay, we're gonna hold that, Ms. Thomas. The, I've got public comments signed up for the next ordinance, and so I'm gonna call them up right now. Looks like K-Rob, K-Rob?
decline.
You're gonna decline, okay, okay. All right, okay, on O-1826, let's go ahead and read it one time, and then we'll hold it.
An ordinance, an ordinance establishing electric rates for North Little Rock Electric Department customers, first reading.
Okay, I'm gonna hold that. Okay, that's all of the, that's everything.
Yes, sir.
Okay, personal comments, first one is, looks like Lula Dixon. To come up and identify yourself, and you've got three minutes to talk about what you want to.
Good evening, I'm Lula Dixon, and I'm here to ask the council if a vote ever come before you to allow pit bull dogs back into North Little Rock, too. Vote no on that. People may say, why do we sing our pit bull? Because my experience in learning and reading, it appears that pit bulls cause more damage than any other dogs. And if you were to ask any owner that has one, every owner that I have spoken with says that their dog is good, their dog doesn't bite, but if that dog has a mouth, that dog does bite. If you listen to the news report, just this past weekend, there was a four-year-old boy that is in Children's Hospital at this time, that has gone through numerous phase reconstruction, where he has been bitten several times by a pit bull within the last week. He's there now, and he may have scars from the rest of his life from a pit bull. If you were to, the mothers that have stood on bus stop waiting for a bus to come by to pick up one child to go to school, I have read where pit bulls have come up to them and actually snatched their babies out of their arms, where they were either killed or maimed very badly. And I can speak on a personal level, where I have a niece that has been bitten by a pit bull. So those dogs are vicious, and I ask that you vote for the childrens that have been bitten, the elders that have been bitten, that they do not be allowed back into North Little Rock. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Next, Mr. Ard?
Wasn't planning on getting up tonight, but I agree with everything she said. I'm a dog lover, I rescued a dog that I have at my house right now and got it vaccinated. But pit bulls are bad news, so please don't let them back in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council members have anything, good order, Mr. Height?
I've been asked to mention that the North Little Rock Friends of Animals is having their spaghetti dinner Friday night at the North Little Rock Parks Hospitality House at Burns Park. I think it starts at, I left my cellphone in the car. I think it starts at, I think it starts at five, and tickets are $10 and $6, so. But Friday, they're having a silent auction, a lot of prizes have been donated, so everybody go out and enjoy spaghetti and bid on something.
Fun time, you, you can, you can get some stuff at a bargain during the auction, so. Seeing no other, how about a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Height?
Yes.
And Witcher?
Yes.
That would be pasta for Paul.